All right. Good evening. It's seven o'clock. It is February 2nd, 2022. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the current chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Present.
Thank you, sir. George Morse.
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews.
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight.
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. Staff, town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Yes.
Hello, Martha. Thank you. Anticipated speakers or presenters on the agenda, please confirm in the affirmative. Drew Garvin?
Not here yet.
Okay. Tom Woodruff?
He is here.
Affirmative.
Hello. Thank you, Tom. All right. Good evening. This is February 2nd, 2022. Yes, happy Groundhog Day. Yes, we have six more weeks of, six more weeks. This is the open meeting for the Newbury Planning Board. It's being conducted remotely consistent with the act relative the extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until April 1st, 2022. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location and allows the public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056, or by calling 9292056099 and entering the meeting ID number one prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendings are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tntv.org. And the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or the representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business injury, ensure accurate minutes. I, as a chair, will induce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members invited each by name to provide any comments, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with a mute button or on your phone with the star six toggle to mute and unmute. When you are not speaking, please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. Public comment will be an opportunity for public comment in questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function for video conference participants to raise your hand hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting by hitting star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask the question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of the raise hand column and again afford the participant applicant representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submitted of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Okay, so let's pop that down and take a look at our agenda and pop that up. So first on our agenda, if I have it correct, Martha, we have the financial report. So let's pop that up. And for the financial report, the planning board financial report for January 2022, payroll invoices are authorized as follows. Number one payroll warrants for the planning director and planning admin PR 22-14 for pay period ending 1 to 22. PR 22-15 for pay period ending 11522. PR 22-16 for pay period ending 12922. Planning board expense, American Planning Association annual dues, which were 12522 and peer review invoices on the escrow account for Parker River Environmental Studies Building Governors Academy of 11922 and 15 Coleman Road, Fieldstone Lane, OSRD 11922. Let's see. Do I have all that, Martha?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we have a couple of minutes. We have some public hearings that will be started at 7:15. So we could probably go through our liaison reports. So why don't we start with you, Leslie? If that works. And you're muted, Les.
Okay, the liaison report from the select board last week, there were a number of licenses to be renewed. There was a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the fire department for rescue ice rescue equipment that was approved for $15,493.66. They also approved and released five different items, six different items for the executive session that are now posted on the website in various different categories. And then the other thing that was talked about in more length was whether or not they would go to remote or stay in a live program. And they decided to stay live because apparently many of the boards around our community are reporting live as select boards or counselors. But I did do a little study of my own and found that like their planning boards and conservation commissions have decided to go on a remote. So that's it for the select board.
Great. Thanks, Leslie. Larry, do we have anything from ZDA?
Not a lot. They're meeting this month, the third Thursday of the month, so two weeks from tomorrow. The last meeting, though, which was, I think, trying to read my own handwriting, January 20th, they did have a discussion about going live or Zoom and they decided at least for this month of February, they would continue with live meetings. But that's about all I have.
Great. Larry, do we start the conversation with a joint meeting? Have we?
I don't. I don't recall if that came up at the last meeting. Martha, do you recall?
I think there was some, some discussion about it, but we haven't set a date yet.
Yeah, no, there's nothing, nothing substantive. Again, you know, it's, it's been discussed a couple of times. They're, they're very willing to do it. I think now that, now that you remind me, I think they're just all sort of putting their, their thoughts together and looking at the bylaws to see where they feel that they need attention. And I think we'll coordinate that when they're ready.
Great. Thank you. Conservation met last night. 170 Orchard will be coming. It was discussed and there'll be some more discussion with 170. So that was continued. I think that's pretty much the one that touched our, our board. Martha, MVP C, hug the door.
I got it. MVP C, I attended two meetings last month. One was the commissioners' meeting also on the 20th, and it was a very interesting invitation, presentation by a guy named Mark Melnick, who's from the Donahue Institute at UMass Amherst about the state of the economy in Massachusetts. Sort of during COVID and now that we're in the, you know, kind of other side of, not other side, but sort of we're not dealing with the immediate impacts now and improvements in the economy. I don't think it's been posted on the MVP C website yet, but as soon as it is, I'll send a link to everybody because it was very, very interesting. And then last week, we had a planners' meeting and most of the discussion centered around the MBTA communities, the zoning, multifamily zoning requirement, which I'll be talking about a little bit later. But I think all the communities are kind of grappling with it one way or another. You know, some like us who have challenges with infrastructure as well as other things. And so anyway, as I said, I'll go into that a little bit more later.
Okay, great. Well, we have a couple of minutes. We have three minutes. Do we want to just touch on a proposed, we could start the discussion of our proposed zoning amendments for the spring 2022, the revised wireless? In that, let's, let's talk about how that process will go. Martha, we make a recommendation to the select board and then they return it back to us for a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the process is very strictly laid out, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, in terms of how it needs to go. So the select board need to refer any, any proposed zoning amendments to the planning board for, for a public hearing. And that hearing needs to happen before, obviously, before, before the town meeting and the board will need to make a recommendation, make a report at town meeting. So in this case tonight, you know, if the board is all in agreement, we'll need to, the board will need to take a vote to submit the proposed amendment on wireless communications to the select board and ask them to submit it back to the planning board for public hearing. And our timing is tight, so I'll go over the schedule.
Go ahead.
No, do you want to do that now?
Um, we have two more minutes.
Pull that up. So can you see, all see that?
Yes, there we go. Thank you.
All right. So here we are on the second. And if the board does vote on submitting it to the select board, I would submit that tomorrow with a cover letter and a draft of the amendment, the current draft that we have now, which obviously needs some further refinement, but at least it gives the select board an idea of what we're doing. Once this planning board submits it to the select board, they have 14 days to submit back to.
Got it.
Okay. Back to the planning board for public hearing. I'll go to the end. Town meeting is scheduled for April 26. Tracy has advised that the select board will approve and sign the town meeting warrant on the 29th of March. So I think they have a meeting scheduled on March 22nd. I've got that down here. And we should get it to them by then. So really, I think the last, sort of the last window to vote to recommend it for town meeting would be the March 16th meeting. I had suggested that we hold the public hearing on March 2nd to give a little bit of time to make refinements. If there are any, any substantive comments that come out of that. My one concern is that in order to meet that public hearing date, newspaper notice will have to be in the paper on February 14th, and that's before our next meeting. So they really, we could have a work group meeting before that, but there really won't be any time for the board to discuss amendments to, to the draft before the notice gets posted in the paper.
Okay.
But that's kind of where we are.
Okay, great. Since we're in this discussion, I'm going to announce that we have two public hearings that are going to, or a public hearing that's going to be started at 7:15. We're just going to hold that for a couple of minutes. So let's just continue this discussion, Martha, since we, we have it. We have everybody's attention on it. So with regards to the wireless communication, I'd at least like to finish this one. Everybody received, received a draft. So this would basically be the draft that we would, that was worked on in the past with some revisions with the work group with our consultant. So if we at least have this working draft to the select board, we'll have an idea of the direction that we'll be needing to, to work on that. And I just want to see if board members had an opportunity to review the previous draft and or the draft that came through, understanding that we, we don't need to vote on the draft, but we would need to submit the, the draft for proposal. So I'm just going to run down the board members and see if there's any questions or concerns with regards to doing that. Larry, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, I, I think, I think we ought to submit it to the board at this point.
Okay, great. George, sir, any opinions on that?
Oh, yes. I'm going along with Larry's opinion. I haven't completed reviewing it, but I'm happy with it.
Okay. Thank you, George. Leslie?
Yeah, after reviewing, I think we should go forward.
Beautiful. Thank you, Leslie. Woody?
I agree. It's to push it forward.
Okay. So what I would need then is I would need a motion to submit the proposed zoning amendments to the select board with a request that it be submitted to the planning board for a public hearing.
I would so move.
Thank you, Larry. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Thank you, Leslie. A discussion on the motion. Discussion, Larry?
No discussions.
Thank you. George, discussion?
No.
Thank you, George. Leslie, discussion?
No.
Thank you, Woody. Discussion?
None.
Thank you. Larry, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. How do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. How do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes in the positive. So we would then need to set a date for a public hearing contingent on the select board to submit a vote for the amendment. And so Martha, let's, what was that date that was on your magical schedule there?
Let me pull that back up again.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Right. So my original suggestion was to hold the public hearing on March 2nd, so a month from today, which would allow one more hearing after that to incorporate any changes that came out of the hearing before it goes to the select board and gets actually incorporated into the warrant. We'll also want to have town, town council review this.
Okay, so that would, I would entertain a motion to have the public hearing so scheduled for the 2nd of March at 7:15?
I'll move.
Thank you, Leslie. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody, for the second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Great. Thanks. Discussion, George?
No discussion.
Thank you, George. Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Great. What do you, any discussion?
None.
Thank you. And how do you vote on the motion, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, George. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. And how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. The chair is also in favor. Beautiful. So I think that takes care of that piece with the wireless communication. Thank you very much for your help with that and putting that together, Martha. Okay, with that being said, we have a public hearing, which we're going to reopen, which was going to be the Governors Academy, Parker River, Environmental Studies Building applicant for modification of a previously approved site plan 313 Newbury Port Turnpike, continuing from 1192022. So just for public's knowledge base, the planning board held a sidewalk on 12622. It was very warm when we started or it seemed the one when we started up the hill. When we got to the other side of the hill and got down by the river, there was a dramatic temperature gradient. But no, so the sidewalk was very, very helpful. I think it gave the board members an opportunity to get a visual for where the entrance will be for the site, for the building, where the walkway will be that'll have the impact, the packed surface for the fire trucks, where the fire hydrants will be located, where the building will be situated. And then we actually walked down the slope of the area, the hill down to the, to the, where the cross-country path is, we were able to see the direction of the boardwalk as it was well marked. And thank you for the marking very much. Drew and Tom, that was very, very helpful. And we had an appreciation of where the dock would be. So I think the sidewalk was very meaningful, very helpful. Martha, anything to add to those comments?
No, I don't think so. You covered it.
Okay, mittens were good. I actually liked the first sidewalk better though, guys. You know, it was much warmer. You know, the tops were down on the cars and all that sort of stuff. Okay. With that being said, that kind of summarizes the sidewalk. I'm going to ask the applicant or the engineer to present responses to Joe's peer review and bring us up to speed with where things are at.
Sure. This is Drew Garvin with Meridian Associates, the engineer for the project. Tom is also with us on one of these screens as the director of buildings on, on the grounds on, for the school for Governors Academy. Last meeting, if you remember, we went through the peer reviewers' letter and I had prepared a letter responding to each comment. And I have since addressed that in the plans. And I can go if the board would like kind of go through that maybe in a similar fashion and just show it how they were addressed on the plans, if they need to be addressed specifically on the plans. And see if you have any questions from there.
Sure. That'd be great. Hey, Martha, I had a kind of a question. When, when we use your little cursor to move it around on the plans, is there a way to color that so that it will stick out? Do you know what I mean?
I think. I think that really is a function of the PDF or whatever's.
Okay.
As opposed to a Zoom function.
I was thinking about that last night when I was in conservation because it's sometimes it's really hard to see where the, the arrows go, the hands go.
Right. I know that Scott Cameron has done that in the past. He'll like draw a color on the plans. But I think that's a function of things at his end.
Okay, great. Sorry for the interruption.
I will share my screen.
You should.
What I'm going to share is the plans. I don't, I don't know if everyone has a copy of the, of the letter. Okay, everyone see that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so to save myself from jumping back and forth on the tree from letter to plans, I'm just going to kind of have my, my letter up on another screen and I'll reference the questions if that makes sense. Okay, so the reviewer went sheet by sheet. And the first comment was regarding the overall site plan. And there was whether these future plannings were just that part of the future. And that's what they are. That was confirmed that this is not part of the approval necessarily, but it's going to be future work just to unify the, the, the access drive and entrance. Just to re-familiarize everyone, here's Middle Road. We're, we're north of, of the main campus, which is down here. Come up the drive, there's the two east and west maintenance buildings. And come up to the end of the drive, which is about here. We're proposing to extend that with parking as well as provide a path to the new building and then the boardwalk going down to the new dock and the gravel way across country trail. So question two was the Canale River Dock. Given the proposed narrow limit of work adjacent to the Park River, it's not obvious how the proper equipment and material will be brought. And we discussed that this is going to be just, it's really only for this concrete anchor block that, you know, where heavy equipment would be needed for the, for the concrete. We won't be needing cement trucks or heavy equipment. The access point would be from this trail off of Middle Road and coming down. You know, I'm picturing like a hand mixer might not be the word, but you know, the, the load, the mixer on the, on a trailer that could just be pulled back and not a, not a heavy duty equipment to prepare that. And that can be done and formed in place without a problem. That was it for sheet one. On sheet two, layout materials. The vertical, the curb was not labeled. And now it is labeled vertical granite curving. That's what that will be. We just labeled curving before, so we corrected that. Raise boardwalk is proposed. Given the limited work is seven to eight feet wide, we wanted to address the, again, the same thing with the equipment and how that will come up and the access to build. And on the plans, I have now provided a detail for that. And these piers are drilled in with, with really a hand device. I'm picturing like a jackhammer that drives them into the ground. Very, it's isolated. It's not like a big, you know, auger driver kind of thing, like well drilling machine or something like that. So they can drill those in by hand and just kind of work their way up. Work their way up the path here and drill the piers in. I think they're going to be every 15 feet or so, I believe. And just sort of work their way up with that machine, that hand machine that they, you know, can carry themselves and drive them in as they go. So I don't foresee that being an issue. Again, they can mobilize down to, on the gravel path, but you know, with the lumber or the piers and then just bring them up as they need it. Number three, posed water and electric source should be shown between the dock and building. So they were, he was saying, this is in relation to this plan that we're looking at. I'm, you can see the limit of work there for that corridor, which is the comment we'll address again. But it is, it's always been shown on this utility plan. And so there's a water and electric line. It's going to run and it, it's probably going to run. It probably will be angled a little bit, but the concept is the same. They will be placed in the same trench. It's fairly shallow. Typically, a water line wants to be five feet below grade for freezing. That does not apply here. This is just a water line that is actually a dry hydrant of sorts, is how I picture it, that's actually going to suck the water from the river for the purposes of the science building and aquariums and things like that. I can't speak for the exact science purposes, but I'm going to use the water for the river. It will not be used in the wintertime. It will not be active. It will be blown out. It's not, freezing will not be an issue. So it can be, it's going to be a fairly shallow trench, minimize disturbing of the trees and whatnot and of the slope. So that is now shown. Number four, board may want a snow storage area. That on the plans. It is in this area here. You remember from the sidewalk, you kind of come to the edge of the existing pavement here. And then as you walk back, there's the tree line and there was the like Jersey barrier wall with a lot of like mulch and a kind of dirt material, earth pile material around here. That's going to be the same material on the snow storage area. That was it for that sheet, C2. Now the sheet three was the green, green drain utility plan. First comment. The sewer main between sewer manhole one and two has a bend in it. So previously, talking about this area, here's sewer manhole one through a manhole two. It previously had a, had a kink in it right about where that my cursor is. And we've since straightened it out. Straight run and it used to cross. So this is existing drainage here in the drive. It used to cross two of these lines here to get to the service at the, at the maintenance building. It now comes around. And one of the other comments is to address a conflict of those crossings. Now it goes just above, I believe, the drainage line. So that has been dealt with and is now a clean run across and down that existing drive. Two fire hydrants, size of material of and slip of the sewer should be shown. Two fire hydrants, size of material of and slip of the sewer should be shown. We now label the linear foot and slope of this sewer line going all the way up to the of both building. All of this line is six inch SDR. And that's a, that's a note on the plans. That's addressed in many utility notes, but that, that is, that's always been a note on there. But that is the, the type of pipe that's going to use for sewer. So that was addressed. Two fire hydrants are shown. He was questioning the fire hydrant here at the end of the drive and a fire hydrant here right next to the building. Back when this was originally approved, that was dealt with in, in team meetings with the town, including the fire department. And the fire department actually requested one hydrant within 50 feet of the building and to leave another hydrant at the end of the drive. And just, oh, by the way, this is all fire access. The stone dust trail is blanked by a grid system that will allow the fire director to get right up to the building. And kind of deal with it accordingly if there was ever a fire. So those, those, those were requested by the fire department and they're going to stay. I assume that everyone would agree. Appears to be a conflict between the six inch sewer main and drain manhole five. I addressed that earlier. That was just crossing. He was talking about, we rerouted that a bit to make sure there was no conflict. Question five. Appears to be that all proposed grading was not accounted for in the basin and the buffer. He was talking about this area down here. And we hadn't put in every line to tie into that existing, whatever the existing slope there. This new basin will overflow. That is an emergency spillway here where severe storms above was designed for it. And goes down to what's called a leveling, a level spreader here, which dents the water before it, you know, with buffers. So it's not just a chugging water that comes down there. And there's also an overflow structure, which also outlet to that same level spreader. But you have, you know, we needed to show that the grading met the existing in that area, that wasn't clear and complete. So now it is. Now all those lines are accounted for and tying to existing. Number six. Asking about ledge removal for the building and what to address, whether it's hammering or drilling or blasting for utilities to the building. We anticipated just to be hammering for specific trenching for whatever line is necessary to get into that building. So, and, and if you remember in the sidewalk, you can see this big ledge knob. We're, we're trying to avoid that other than what, we can't see under the ground. But whatever is necessary, you know, things like cable and electric can be fairly shallow. So we were just anticipating hammering out those type of utility connections for the ledge. Raised boardwalk appears to be two to three feet above grade. But at grade in other locations, please verify that the surface runoff is not going to be blocked. There were a couple areas. Really, the first run was, I think, in decent shape. There were a couple of spot grades that you was correct that were sort of at grade and not really appropriately showing that approximate two foot offset of the, of the boardwalk sitting above grade and letting the, letting runoff flow underneath. So that has been revised with spot grades. And still making sure it meets the, the ADA compliance with the less than a 5% slope for this ramp coming all the way down to the bottom. And while we're here, I'm just going to note, this is not a comment, but it was a request from Martha and I think the board to widen what is going to be the new location for the gravel cross-country path. This is going to be abandoned and replanted. It's going to be rerouted here. And we were only showing it four feet wide before, and now we've widened to six feet, which is fairly consistent with, with what is there and enough room for the runners to continue on their way. And there's no steps. It's just a continuous, it actually comes to a high point here. But it's fairly gradual up to the high point of where the dock would be and back down and tying the, the existing gravel way. So we did widen that so that can operate as it did previously. Question eight. Details provided for basin one, but not for two or three. Please provide details. So on the only provided a detail for basin one because of these structures are really what's needs to be detailed, the overflow pipes and this, here's the level spreader that we just talked about. So that was shown in detail. For the other pools, they're just going to have spillways on them. I'll jump back in a moment. But all, so all I did is just show what the spillway looks like. And the elevations that apply to each basin two and three, to the top of burn and then the spillway elevation. And those, if you recall, are over here. So it's just a grade, the grading is shown here. And the inlet's coming in for the roof drains. But when this overtops, it's just a little spillway here. And then it goes down a swell to the low, lower basin three, which also for severe storm tags, a spillway of equal elevation. So I've just labeled that and detailed that on the detail sheet to be clear for the contractor and everyone else who's looking at the plans. Number nine. Engineer should address how all infiltration basins comply with the, the stormwater policy. So as, as we said before, these basins, this is a, a new approval. This has already been approved. All these basins are in compliance with volume and recharge and a treatment of stormwater. As, as they originally were when the project was originally approved four years ago. So that hasn't changed. So I just restated that. There wasn't anything he was calling out specifically to address. So, you know, if there is something, we can certainly address it if we all mute the policy. Number 10, access should be provided to basin two and three. So obviously there's access to basin one, but he's saying for maintenance purposes, whether you have to clean out debris or, or whatnot. You want to have a, a maintenance way to get a truck up there to, and any equipment to do so. So I've now provided, it would just be, you know, on the ground, but there is sort of a relatively level compared to the rest of the slope area here to, for, for a maintenance vehicle to come up and be able to kind of directly access and reach in and bring tools to dig out those, those basins for maintenance in the future if necessary. But I've now shown that on the plans. That's it for sheet three. Maybe I should take a break and stop talking and see if there's any questions going up to that point. Me and muted, I think.
Sorry, Drew, I would say continue on and then I'll have board members ask questions at the end, if that's okay. Thanks.
Sheet four, the landscaping plan. Relative to the infiltration basin, he did not like to be planted trees in one of the basins. So that is unchanged. I just gave an explanation that this is really acting more as a, what's called a rain garden in the stormwater policy, which does contain plants and is recommended for critical areas and areas of like cold water fisheries and whatnot. So, and it's only treating the roof runoff, which does have a different criteria than, than water coming up of a parking lot, say with vehicle fluid and so on. So we thought this was appropriate as well as aesthetically, you know, pleasing for this area. And will work very well and function appropriately for drainage purposes. So these plantings remain. We did slide it away from the building slightly only because there's some utility units that are going to go in here. But that's all appropriate. The plan was stamped by a PE rather than a landscape architect. We just have a landscape architect sign it. We have a landscape architect in our office, Nick Betts, who signed it for me for a small fee. The plant schedule lists six trees. There were previously some trees, they're removed for the, some utility work here. So there's, they're still planting here, but they've been removed for in the original approval, these weren't, these were not part of the design. But now it's come to light that they are. So we did remove those trees, but I still had them listed in the table. So I just removed those listings from the table to keep everything existing. Lights are shown, but no details provided. So we do have, the architect has provided the lighting specs. There's three sort of short pedestrian kind of bollard type lights to light the path on the building. And there is going to be wall pack units on the building that I don't anticipate. They are, I believe they are dark sky. I tend to absolutely provide those to the board. As, you know, as a supplement to this criminal, as a condition of approval would be fine. So they are designed, I believe, a dark sky. We don't anticipate using a lot of light out here. As it's, you know, a school building, it's, I don't think that I have a ton of night use, maybe more than typical other classrooms. But it really should be, mostly during the day use. So I don't anticipate that being the issue. Proposed planting legend has existing trees to remain, but be protected within the limit of work. How are you going to do both? Silk sock along the along the downhill slope of the boardwalk as well as protecting trees. And I think it was helpful in the field to see how that might work. This will, I've been saying, has some artistic license to go around and really these circles are just a symbol. So you're not really breaking through circles. You're just protecting things as you go along the downhill slope of where the boardwalk's going to go. And I think both can be done. And it's just going to have to be a case by case basis as you go along and just to protect it appropriately. Again, the silk sock was not here before along this downhill slope and it is now. We only had, I think, one silk sock over here. Questioning whether we need more. And you did, and conservation commission brought up the same thing. We, we have provided that. The board may want soil stockpile areas to be shown. You showed them now on the plan. Couple areas uphill and off the slope to store materials. Again, this earth pile will be a good place. You know, it'll be cleared out, but we should kind of reuse it for material area for, for construction. So I, and there may, there may be more that I'm showing, but certainly I flagged a couple areas that would make sense. But it will be clear in the order of conditions that the contractor knows to stay out of the resource areas. The buffers and stockpile everything uphill of those resource areas. Record shall be stamped by PE. Oh, the stormwater report needs to be stamped by a PE. It was stamped by, I don't have a picture of the stormwater report, but it was stamped on the, on the backside of the pages. We, I did revise it and send it to the reviewer with the cover sheet stamped as well. So obviously everything's been reviewed by a PE and certified as such. And we also reset the watershed maps. And again, on those reports along with our recent middle. And then the last comment was, again, about the basins and making sure they comply with the stormwater policy, which they do, and they did, wouldn't do a reasonable for them. So we don't consider anything to be out of compliance. And there are all these comments addressed. That's it. That's my spiel and welcome with any questions.
Right, true. Thank you very much and I appreciate it. So I'd just like to go down to board members to see if anyone has any questions on what was just discussed. Larry, sir, do you have any questions?
It just was pretty, I think it was all pretty clear. Thank you. I, I'm just a little bit confused. Is there a disagreement with the peer reviewer about the stormwater policy, do you think? Or is that something that needs to be, that you need to discuss with him?
I don't think there is. I can't speak for him, obviously. I've, you know, we responded. I didn't, we didn't get anything back prior to this meeting. So from my view, there is no issue.
Larry, I'll just, I'll just interject that I think these plans were dropped off Monday and they were picked up yesterday by our reviewers. So I don't think Joe's had an opportunity to look at them. Didn't mean to interrupt, Larry.
Yeah, I mean, no, you're not. And that was my only question. I'm sure whatever, if there is an issue, I'm sure that you should be able to work it out. That's all I had.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you, Larry. George, do you have any questions or comments?
Nothing at all, except thank you very much for the nice presentation.
Thank you, George. Leslie, questions or comments?
Not really, no.
Okay.
Was pretty clear.
Beautiful. Thank you. Woody, any questions or comments?
I'm curious about one thing. How much water are you going to pump out of the river and put in the building? Just out of curiosity.
I can, I can take a stab at that one. So the, the aquarium systems in the building will be there on a, on a closed loop system. So the water will be withdrawn from the river, stored in, I've forgotten the exact tank size, but the, the main tank somewhere in the 800 gallon range-ish, 800 to 1,000. That, that water will then be treated, circulated throughout the building, distributed to the individual aquarium and then retreated. You know, the, the different things that are in the water from the, from the fish and whatever else are in the aquarium will be removed. It'll be heated or cooled, you know, pH adjusted or whatever else needs to happen and then recirculated. So it's sort of a one-time withdrawal, stored in tanks in the building and then used for, you know, a certain period of time, whatever the experiments require. So it's not a, you know, maybe 500, 800, 1,000 gallons at a time, once a month-ish. That helps.
Okay, so then where does it go when you're done?
When you're done, it goes down the drain to our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
It's not dredged back into the river.
All right. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thanks, Woody. Hey Drew, I have a question, but it doesn't, and thank you for your thorough presentation. But has the fire department seen the site? Because the only, the only reason I asked that question is the slope of that hill as we were walking up that hill.
I don't think, well, I, I can't speak to recently. I, I want to say they did. Again, we met with them for the original approval back in 2018. So I think they did then. But, and again, I know it's, I know it's steep here. I'm looking at the plan and you're not, but it is. It does get leveled off. We actually raised the grade where the proposed parking extension is. So it, it is not, the bites could have been taken out of the finished condition. So it isn't, I would not call it a steep slope. In other words, the end of the parking area is 41 and the building entrance is 43. Now there's a little hump in there. If you remember, the saddle is kind of up there. That'll still be there, but we're talking about, you know, not many feet, a couple feet up to the hump and then back slightly down to the building. So I think that's, I think that was addressed to your satisfaction.
May I?
Sure, Leslie.
Thank you. So Drew, are you proposing that you're going to build up before you get to the saddle? The grade?
Right. The, that extent, the parking extension. Yeah, that parking extension. Let me just, I'm going to put it back on for everyone to see.
Where do you propose that that grade will change, will begin?
So. This is elevation. Fifteen point five forty. This is elevation forty contour existing here, right? Elevation forty thirty nine is here. Existing, all right? So this is, this is the pavement extension we're on now. This was the first state that we found in the field, right? So this is existing thirty nine and the proposed finish grade is forty one. So it's going to go up about two feet right at the end of that parking area. So it aren't, you're already starting two feet higher at the, at the, what is going to be the end of the new parking. Uh and drive and the beginning of the footpath and fire access as it were to this grid system. So it goes to forty one and then it goes uphill to a high point of about forty. Four? Forty four and a half. Really seeing that, so I'm jumping around. Going to a high point here of forty four and a half, so that's only three and a half feet. And then it just, it gradually goes back to the entrances, which is going to be about forty three. So that's the hump in the middle of the saddle. Here's the big ledge knob. And this is right when you're in the center of the saddle. And so it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of pitch there. And really that two feet is getting really helped a lot to bite out of.
The emergency access vehicles shouldn't have. Any difficulty uh as far as uh. Getting to the fire hydrants in the event of an emergency?
That's right. And that's, I think that's why they wanted to make sure they were, I I think were.
They're going to have to go up forward and come down backwards, right?
Right, that's right. Um there is a turnaround, but you do have to come, you do have to back in here and then do the turnaround that way.
Right.
But that's, we we did for the original approval, really go over this a lot and really had to. Add this grid system. And the reason it gets so much wider is we're actually parking two trucks there. And I think, I don't know exactly how the fire department does it, but it's probably, you know, the tank truck has to get out and reload. You know, in case of some extreme situation and you can do that, but and and again, there's two hydrants. Within a hundred feet apart, so and one right next to the building, so. I think have a pretty conservative design to the fire department satisfaction. And that's dating back to the original approval as well as that.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Drew. Didn't mean to throw your curve ball there.
All right.
That hill, I was thinking about that.
All right, the fire department does not use walking sticks, as I understand it.
That's good. Um Martha, uh do we have any written uh comments from any departments?
I have not received any comments either from departments or the public.
Beautiful. Okay. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak in favor of this project? I don't see anything. Uh do we have anyone from the public who would uh like to speak against this project? Okay, I'm not seeing anything either. Okay, um so. Um because the plans were just dropped off, Joe's going to have to respond to your responses, Drew, which hopefully won't be taking. Uh too long. Um uh so I might be inclined to see if the board. Uh would be interested in directing Martha to start a draft decision. So let me just kind of poll the board. Uh Larry, your thoughts?
Yeah, I know. I think, I think uh I feel comfortable going there.
Okay, great. George?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
And Woody?
Yes.
Okay, uh Martha, why don't we pop up the criteria just to make sure that we don't have any negative impacts that we need to just. Pay attention to. And I know that this already went through around a few years ago, but let's just make sure.
All right, are you able to see that?
I am. I'm going to have you kind of walk us through the 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 pieces here.
All right, um so the first, um the first would be to see whether any of these changes have any impacts on. On A, the volume of cut and fill, number of removed trees, six inches caliper or larger. Area of wetland vegetation displaced, soil erosion, or the threat of air and water pollution or traffic congestion.
I don't believe that that is the case, but I want to poll Larry.
I have no concerns about it.
Great, George?
None.
No.
Beautiful, Woody?
No.
Okay, great. Thanks. Didn't mean to cut folks off. I'm just rapid fire here. Um go ahead, Martha.
All right, uh the next is removal of existing stone walls um or minimizing length of removal.
Um I what's the most expeditious way? If anyone has a a concern with that, just please voice it out after we go through it. Okay, any concerns? Okay, uh next?
Uh providing adequate stormwater management, other utilities consistent with Newbury Stormwater Bylaw and the subdivision rules and regs.
Concerns? Okay, next.
Uh maximizing safety pedestrians and vehicles both on the site and entering onto and ingressing from it.
Any concerns? I don't see any. Okay, next.
Uh providing adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency service equipment.
I think we've talked about that. Perfect.
Minimizing obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations.
Okay, and this is based on the modification. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Next.
Um minimize visual intrusion by controlling visibility, parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises, residentially used or zoned.
Okay, I don't see any concerns. Next.
Uh minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and sight lighting on surrounding properties.
Okay, don't see any concerns raised. Okay, next.
Uh minimize unreasonable departure from the character material scale of buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places.
Bless you. Uh I don't see any concerns. Thanks, next.
Uh prevent contamination of groundwater from any source.
I don't see any concerns. Thank you, next.
Uh enhance the appearance of property to the greatest degree possible by means of landscaping and other site amenities.
I don't see any concerns. Next.
Uh L minimize impacts of the use on adjacent properties through regulation of hours of operation. Deliveries, noise, rubbish removal, and onsite storage.
I don't see any concerns. Next.
And ensuring compliance with provisions of Newbury zoning bylaw, including parking and signs.
And again, I don't see any concerns. Great. So this was basically to the modifications of the previous approved plan. Beautiful. Um, great. So um. That being the case, um Martha, I think we'd like to have the board start the process. Would you like that in the form of a motion?
Uh sure, the board would like to make one.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to start the process for a draft.
Wonderful. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, George. Uh on the motion discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Thank you, discussion, George.
None.
Thank you, discussion, Leslie?
No.
Thank you, discussion, Woody. None. Thank you. On the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And the chairs are favored as well. Beautiful. Um so next we'll need to continue our public hearing. Um. So. We, our next meetings are the sixteenth or March second. Martha, a timeframe for drafting a decision is the sixteen to. Too tight or is the second a better fit?
I think we could end for the sixteenth. I know, I know that uh.
Tom is ready.
Tom is rehearing to go. Um and so I I think we can get that going.
Okay, all right. Um that being the case, uh I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the sixteenth of February at seven fifteen.
So move.
Thank you, Larry, for the motions are second.
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Uh on the motion discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Thank you, discussion, George?
No discussion.
Thank you, George. Just question, Leslie?
None.
Wonderful, Woody discussion.
None.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
George votes yes, Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Make your chairs in favor as well. That's what happens when you go out of order, huh? Boy, it takes that.
Looks great.
All right.
So Pete and Martha, just so I'm clear on the how this is going to go. So you'll you'll draft the decision for the next meeting and assuming we have. Uh minor or any or no comments from the reviewer to address or can can address them prior to the sixteen. Do you then close the hearing at that time and accept the draft with any comments that, you know, during that meeting?
Correct, Martha?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that that would be the goal. Obviously, if there's a more major comment or something like that, it may need to to go beyond that to get that resolved.
But right, but I'm I'm hoping and assuming that's shouldn't be good, so. Um okay, so we should be able to close it up this next meeting with a draft decision in hand and then and then move forward. Uh you know, as Martha said, we're trying to gearing up to get things going here.
And the two day appeals period or uh public comment periods on the sixteenth?
No, so what will happen is um if if the decision is approved that night, we'll still need to get it signed. Um and then as soon as it's filed with the town clerk, that's when the twenty day appeal period starts.
Okay. So thank you.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you very much for coming and we appreciate your patience uh and participation. Great. Thanks, Drew. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you all very much.
Right, yeah.
All right, let me see where we are on our agenda, Martha. And so, so we have concluded our discussion on old business.
We have another public hearing that was scheduled.
That was scheduled and it was um it was asked for continuance, correct?
Uh correct. I can read it. We got a continuance this afternoon from Eric McLean. Um on behalf of Alliance Newbury One LLC, I am requesting that the public hearing regarding the special permit application. For ground mounted solar PV installation on the Newbury landfill at seventy five Boston Road scheduled for tonight, be continued to the next available meeting date.
Wonderful. Uh so would you need a motion to continue this or can we just do this administratively?
Uh no, it needs, we need a motion.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to continue. Uh so let's just talk about this for a second, Martha. A realistic date, a realistic timeframe, do we think this is probably going to take a a two-month interval maybe or do we want to?
It's hard to say. Did we chat to Eric to see um whether the next meeting was actually um. A reasonable timeframe to get get these things resolved. Um I didn't hear back, so. I think probably it would make sense to honor that request and and. Set it for the sixteenth and if it needs to keep, continue again, we'll do so.
Okay, uh that being the case, I'd entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the special permit application for the ground mounted solar. PV installation on seventy five Boston Road to the sixteenth of uh February, seven fifteen.
Promote.
George says motion and what did you just second that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Our discussion, the motion discussion, Larry?
No.
Thank you, discussion, George.
No.
Uh discussion, Leslie? Thank you, discussion, Woody.
None.
Thank you. Uh how do you vote, Larry?
Uh yes, sorry.
Thank you. Uh George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh thank you. Uh Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful, chairs in favor as well. And Martha, thank you for keeping me honest on that one, because. All right. Um so we have covered our uh our old business with regards to wireless, uh onto new new business. Um multi-family uh zoning requirements for MBTA communities. Okay, Martha.
All right, so I just wanted to give kind of a high level overview on this. I did mention it in the planner's report um. Uh recently, um this is a requirement again uh that was passed by the legislature last year for. All MBTA communities to designate a zoning district. To allow multifamily housing by right um within the town. Um what this means for, I'm going to try to uh screen share here and I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to do it. Um only because I'm I'm doing it from, I'm trying to pull up map, my map here, so we'll see if that. If I'm actually able to do that or not, um. So um. I think, well, let me just try something. If it doesn't work, I will. So are you able to see that?
We are.
Okay, wow, that was a first. So basically, the requirement is that the uh each MBTA community. And we are considered an MBTA community because if you can see my cursor here. We are municipal boundaries within half a mile of the MBTA commuter rail station in Newburyport. So um. Uh municipalities are are required to designate a zoning district within half a mile of the MBTA station. Uh to allow some amount of multifamily housing by right. What this means, so I drew on my map, I drew a half mile radius circle. I think I could have actually started a little bit lower. Because there is a parcel that comes down here that includes the parking lot for the station and I think we can do that. But um I just wanted to bring some of these things to your attention as you start to go through the guidelines that I distributed. And again, we need to get um comments on the guidelines to DHCD by March thirty first. So what they're looking at, um. There are a couple of things. Each community will have sort of a minimum number of multifamily housing units that are required. The town needs to set aside um a minimum of fifty acres with a density of fifteen units per acre. Um it cannot be age restricted and there can't be anything which will um discourage use by family. So no, no limitations on numbers of bedrooms and things like that. Um the issue comes up, and I've already raised this um a couple of times, both at MVPC and also in a webinar that I attended. Is if you look at this map, um. This, this particular area has um floodplain, wetlands, a little river comes through it. So there's riverfront protection. The ACC, which is this striped area, comes up into it. We've got area that's in uh chapter sixty one A, right side, right outside of it is area that's in. Um agricultural preservation restriction. And we have no water and sewer infrastructure. So there, um you know, there are certainly some considerations here. The other requirement is. Um there are kind of two, two requirements regarding the number of units. That need to be allowed in this district, which can be an overlay district. Or, you know, some, some other uh type of district, but it does need to be established. Um for MBTA communities with MBTA commuter rail stations. The the minimum is fifteen percent of the total housing units in the community. For us, that would be about four hundred and sixty. However, there's another requirement which kind of conflicts with that. And which we're held to, um which is that it needs to be a density of fifteen. Units per acre, as I mentioned before, for fifty acres and that brings us to a minimum of seven hundred and fifty units. According to the US twenty twenty census, we currently have three thousand seventy two units of housing. So if you take seven fifty, divide that by uh the three thousand seventy two, you come up with almost twenty five percent. It's twenty four point four percent. So um you know, that's actually more, um you know. Creates a higher number of units than we would have. Ordinarily, uh if we were looking at the fifteen percent for commuter rail station uh for commuter rail communities. So that's another question. Um. We going through, I went through the guidelines this afternoon and it does mention a number of times. That if there are constraints regarding water and sewer, um the developable, developability of the land and other things. There can be some flexibility, so we're going to have to dig into that a little bit deeper. But I just wanted to kind of show you this and bring it to your attention as you go through the guidelines. So you can kind of think about that as you develop any questions or comments that you think we should pass pass back to DHCD going through this. Um in order, their compliance uh really goes out over several years. Um in order to be in compliance for this year, um we'll need to get the comments back by March thirty first. We need to make a presentation to the select board before May second and there's a form that needs to be submitted. And there's a form that needs to be submitted. We're then going to have to develop a compliance plan. And I think, I think we need to make a commitment to DHCD by December thirty first of this year that we will do that. Since we don't allow multifamily by right anywhere in town right now. And then we have to have the plan. By the following year, I think the zoning doesn't need to be adopted if I'm correct on this until December thirty first of twenty twenty-four. So that means it would have to go before town meeting, a special town meeting in October of that year at the latest. We will certainly be getting assistance from MVPC on this. They developed, I'll see if I can show this to you. If you can see that they they've already developed sort of a mapping. They also outlined the area and showed, if you can see down here. Newbury seven hundred and fifty units required. It shows the MBTA station. This line here is our business and light industrial district. So they will certainly be helping us with the analysis that we need to do to develop our action plan and our compliance plan. And town council will be helping us. We may also be able to get technical assistance from the Mass Housing Partnership. But it's gonna be a process. There's certainly an impact on us. I mean, requiring a quarter of our current housing units to be. Multifamily and allowed by right is, you know, that's, that's a significant impact on us, especially with no water and sewer. Right now, the, I'll say, the stick is that if we don't come into compliance. We will not be able to apply for certain grants from the state, including, including housing choice. And mass works. And one other, and I know that some, some communities are having, you know, some discussion about that. You know, what's, what's the trade off if you don't get those funding dollars, but you have to put money into infrastructure or other kinds of things? So that's basically. It unless there's, anybody has any questions right now.
I do have a question. Yes, Martha, is the, do the guidelines provide any commentary about taking a property into this situation? Either by the state, by the city, or the town?
No, there's no commentary. And I think the idea is that there, there would not be any takings involved. It's just, it's a change. And it doesn't, it doesn't actually at this point require that these seven hundred and fifty units be developed. The town just has to allow them to be developed by right.
Very well.
And there can, actually, there can be some sub-districts within the district, so you could have different. Different requirements or different design standards, guidelines for different districts. So, you know, maybe one would be appropriate for higher rise. One might be something like. A Caldwell Farm development where we've got a number of, say, four, four unit structures. These are all things that we're gonna have to kind of think through how best to meet this requirement. But my big flex, my big question really is what kind of flexibility do we have given? You know, given the development issues with the area around the train station and also the. You know, our lack of water and sewer infrastructure, because they do mention a number of times. Title five compliance and that kind of stuff, so. A lot to learn and a lot to think about.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was a long answer to your question. Sorry.
It overlapped and it was a good answer.
Martha, the, the report to DHCD you mentioned, does that come from us or from the select board?
I think it will come from the town. But I would imagine that the, the planning board, since this is going to have to be a zoning amendment, the planning board will be largely be the driver on this. But and as I said, we do, there will need to be a presentation made to the select board on this before, on or before May second. And we did talk with MVPC about them putting together some sort of a PowerPoint that all the MVPC communities might be able to use. In doing that, so we're all kind of providing a consistent message. And, you know, have, have the facts and don't miss anything.
All right, well, um, thank you. Thank you for the diagrammatics. It's, it's helpful and it is going to be a challenge. I think we'll just have to. See how these steps proceed forward and. There'll be more, more, more discussion. So these, these, this was to be an introduction to the board. And materials will be sent to be reviewed and then we'll have to make our plan of action.
Right. So I think what I'd like to, you know, see is. Find, find an appropriate time and and the next two months will go by very quickly. Maybe have a couple of sessions where we, you know, talk about comments or reactions or questions that we want to pass on to DHCD.
Do we want to look at a calendar now to see about a couple of dates? That makes sense?
Well, our next meeting is the sixteenth of February, whether we want to aim for that or go for March second. I wouldn't go beyond March second.
Well, then, let's, let's start for our next meeting. I think that makes, makes the most sense.
Okay, then I will certainly share anything that I learned in the meantime.
Very good.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Now, this is George saying good night.
Good night, George. Thank you.
In the building. Thank you.
George Morse has left the building. Thank you, sir. Okay, beautiful. Thank you, Martha. Okay, planner, planner's directors report.
Okay.
Can we, hold on one second. I'm sorry for the, for the discussion on the multi-family zoning. Are we aiming for our February sixteenth meeting on that?
To start our discussion, Martha?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And if I could just jump in to add on to my liaison report that I failed to report on. There was a large group of people that attended the select board meeting from Larkin Road. To discuss the fixing of the bridge and. Board, select board will be looking into it and setting a date somewhere down the line.
Thank you, Leslie.
It wasn't on the agenda, so it kind of slipped my mind a little bit.
Okay, not a problem. We'll put that into your, the select board report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, planning directors report. Back to Martha.
All right, um, let's see. A few things here. We've received a public hearing notice from Rowley that I thought. You all might be interested in. Because they are actually related to discussions we were having about other zoning amendments we are hoping to move forward. They are going to be holding a public hearing on February ninth. On a proposal to request that the town create a Rowley Affordable Housing Trust. And they are also going to be modifying certain sections of their bylaw. To basically increase affordable housing. So they've got. It's in their multifamily dwelling section, open space residential development section, and New England Village Development Section. Proposing projects that ten or more units require at least ten percent of the proposed units to be designated as affordable. So I'm gonna reach out to the, the planner in Rowley to see if I can get the language for all of that and pass that on to you. But I will also send the public hearing notice to you. In case anybody would like to attend.
Are they in person or are they zoomed?
I was just looking at that. It looks like it's gonna be held in the town annex building room at thirty-nine Central Street, beginning at seven PM. So it looks like they are in person.
Okay.
The date of that?
And the date is February ninth, so next Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
To really share notes here. Get creative if we could.
Yeah, yeah, no, it'd be interesting to see what somebody else is doing, you know, right now, sort of in, in real time. I also, I think this was also discussed in the finance committee meeting. But we have, we are getting ready to pick up on the master plan and move that forward. We have retained a consultant, the consultant we were working with previously, the planners are no longer with that firm. They're not doing master plan work anymore. So we have retained a consultant who is going to help us kind of pull this over the finish line. So a master plan committee will be reappointed. But I think we need to kind of get a, get a strategy and a work plan put together, so I will keep everybody posted on that. You know, the planning, it is, the master plan is a responsibility of the planning board under Mass General Law. So traditionally, all of the planning board members have been on the committee. And then there's some resident members and, and also some town. Board and committee members as well.
Wonderful. That's very good news and I'm glad we're able to report that. Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome. I received right before the meeting and I noticed FEMA and I'm gonna ask, see if we can actually get this up on the website. But I thought it might be interesting to. Report it to you now. There's been a FEMA received a recommendation from its Technical Mapping Advisory Council. Display flood risks in coastal areas that include future effects of long-term erosion and sea level rise. So they've elected to initiate a coastal erosion hazard study for Essex County. And have created a coastal erosion hazard maps displaying projected hazards for twenty thirty, twenty fifty, and twenty one hundred. Incorporating projected sea level rise. There is going to be a meeting, virtual meeting on February sixteenth, which unfortunately is our next meeting date. From six thirty to eight PM, I'm going to reach out to them to see if that's gonna be recorded and available. But they are looking for community input, so if we can get this up on the website, at least, you know, residents will know that it's available. Just wanted everybody to know we have, and this is partly in case you get any comments. We've gotten, I've gotten a few phone calls about. People who have been impacted by blasting that's happening at fifteen Coleman for the septic system. And Tom has been very responsive in having his blaster reach out to people who have been concerned. But I just wanted to let you know, if for some reason anybody reaches out to you, you know, let me know and we'll. You know, get Tom's blaster in touch with them or.
Martha, has the blasting company approached the butters as far as doing a. A check on seismic differences before and after the blasting?
They did a free, a pre-blast survey for all the residences that are within the required area. And I think now because of some of the comments or questions that people have raised, they may be doing a little outside that. So they've done what they were required to, but.
Okay.
But there may be more. So, and the last thing I had on my list is we have a resident has reached out with concern about our meeting minutes. And the fact that we haven't been able to, you know, get them all drafted and up on the website in a, in a timely fashion. So that's something that we're going to have to address.
Well, you know, Martha, Larry and I had an opportunity to discuss this. I think we have a remediation plan that we can put into place that. Will help address that. So I think the, we can, we'll be working on that to resolve that. Thank you.
Okay, so that could be something we could discuss at the next meeting.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, great. All right, and that was all I had on my list.
All right, last on the agenda is I see meeting minutes for February seventeenth and March third. Those were submitted and I.
The seventeen.
Was submitted. And I don't know if everyone had an opportunity to review those or not. They were kind of.
All nineteen pages.
Very, very good. You said what I was gonna say. Thank you very much. If people have had an opportunity to review those and there are no questions or comments. Okay, then I'd entertain my motion.
Motion to approve.
And that would, for the.
February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Woody. Discussion, Larry.
Well, I'm gonna abstain just because AL prime is on there and if you recall.
Oh, that is correct. A very good discussion, Woody.
None.
Discussion, Leslie. Thank you for refreshing, Larry. How do you vote? Woody, Woody, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yes.
Wonderful, and I'd be a favor as well. Thank you. That being the case, I don't see anything else on our agenda, so I would be more than happy to entertain a motion to conclude our evening.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Larry?
No.
Great. Discussion, Woody.
None.
Excellent. Leslie, discussion.
None.
Great. Larry, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Woody?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Good night, Woody.
Thank you, Woody. And Leslie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Pleasure being here this evening, Martha. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Night.